Looks like you got bitten by jaws. Over and over again, regurgitated.
You're going to have to do rail on the stage. You're going to have to get up just even a couple steps.
Really? More than making force. Oh, he has something. He's pushing it.
Also, he's seven.
Yeah, he's seven, yeah.
Not eight.
No. Wait, he wasn't years was in coming. It really wasn't.
Do you want to call the meeting to order?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we just, before we approve the agenda, a motion to add to the agenda. We have put an art queue out for administrative services for the Small Cities Grant that we had repurposed for the Senior Center. And we only received one bid, and the gentleman that's been currently working on the grant is the person who put the bid in. So, a motion to approve the agenda under, let's see, we'll put it after the appointment of assessor before we get to transfer station. Motion to add to the agenda. Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do approval of minutes from April 23rd. Motion to approve the minutes. I'll make the motion. Any discussion?
Yes. Again, I'd like to suggest having more information in here instead of just the one I get there with a brief discussion. I think it's important to get the information down of what happened at a Board of Selecting meeting instead of just the motions and votes. We included the entire correspondence letter from Ralph regarding the library, but no discussion from the Board of Selecting members. And again, this is a Board of Selecting meeting, and I think the notes and minutes should reflect our discussion. Just my comments. And if you would prefer me to write a letter and enter it into the record, I could do it that way. If that's easier for Joanne instead of her getting all of my comments down.
Any other discussion? Okay, Melissa, just, you know, I took what you had said about minutes. We looked at things that previous town council had looked at for minutes, going back under when Bruno Morosy was in, were obviously more detailed. I have minute meetings that you yourself took where there's no discussion, no anything at all. So, I think the job that Joanne does to include the minutes in what we have in the record is sufficient. And I'm not sure why it was okay under your administration, but it's not now.
The general Board of Selecting minutes that were taken by Alice and Ellie, which were 99% of the time, I did have occasional meetings that were compulsory, quick little vote on to close a road here or there. But again, the minutes for the Board of Selecting meeting were very detailed. The minutes for the Board of Finance meetings used to be very detailed. This is something that is important, at least to me. This is my personal opinion. There's nothing illegal about these minutes. But again, for posterity of town records and town, what happens in town, it should, in my opinion, be more detailed.
And meetings are taped, and those are on record for people to see that information also.
So, I could come in and get an audio tape of something from eight months ago, then? Joanne will have that?
No, you can go online or, yeah.
They're online?
I have the audio. I could drag it onto a disc if you'd like.
Okay, or I could come in and listen to it in your office? Hang on.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor? I approve of the April 24th minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Public comment?
Yes. First comment has to do with...
Can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Edward Strang. I live in 144 Churchill Road in Haddon. Haddon resident, and I'm yet to tell if I had them bought. And I've been in town for about 30 years. Regarding the sale of Saturday, my question is, did you have an appraisal for those properties? I'm asking the question because normally when you sell property for the town, town properties, you have an appraisal done to make sure you get the right price. When I look at some of the vacant land on Silver Street Drive, I mean, the prices range from $120,000 to $300,000 for two to three or four acres. So, have we had appraisal done for this spot? Because $50,000 seems to be a starting, a very, very low starting pool, so it looks like a fire sale.
So, an appraisal was done with the assessed value that the town clerk has on file. So, those are the amounts that we're using for the lots.
All right. Hold up, let me check on that. Thank you. My second comment has to do about the charter. And I should very be aware of this. You, as the first selectman, don't have the authority to fire or hire people, the town employees. According to Section 814, the Board of Selectmen shall be responsible for the hiring, review, evaluation, suspension, and dismissal of all employees in the town, all employees. So, my understanding right now is that Jennifer Gauthier is still on the town payroll because you don't have that authority. It has to be a vote by the Board of Selectmen. It has to be done in next year's session and give a chance to the employee if he or she wants to make his or her case to the Board before the Board votes to fire the employee. You can let the employee go. It's not an authority that you have on your own. So, I would urge you to check with the town attorney.
Okay, thank you. Kyle, would you like to possibly make a comment on behalf of the town, as the town labor attorney, since you're here?
At this point, I always would say hi. At this point, I would say I have to review the charter provision and, in light of practices that have, in the light of what practices have been in the town, what sort of approvals have been in the record.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Neil Perrin, why was she drawn for fire?
I have a comment. Well, for misconduct is what I've been told I can say.
Well, this is a public...
What you were told.
Yes.
It's a public meeting, it's public info.
It's common for towns and layers to keep employment decisions confidential between the town and the employees.
Technically, Jennifer's no longer an employee, although technically now we found out she might be. It is all public record. Hi, Kyle. It is all public record of why an employee was fired. And if any citizen wanted to go to the town office building and ask for the file, they would be able to get that file, minus some medical, social security information. So, I'm just wondering what the big secret is. As a board member, this is very important. I asked at the last Board of Selecting meeting why she was fired. I was told that Mrs. Malarde wanted to check with the town attorney to make sure she could say why she was fired.
I did. And lawful misconduct is the answer.
What was the specific incidents?
I have no further comment.
So, you're denying the people the right to know the reason why somebody was fired? Or you're denying the Board of Selectmen information of why an employee was fired, unilaterally by you?
I'll note that, yes, you know, under public information, any non-exempt records, you can, under Freedom of Information Act, public records, that are non-exempt. You can obtain, review, and attain a citizen's right to do that. As far as whether public comment has been made at the meeting without the reason, that there's no requirement that that be made. And oftentimes, lawyers like me are going to recommend that it not be discussed in open form for a variety of reasons, including exposure to future claims, things like that.
So, if I came in tomorrow and talked to you, then you'd be able to share with me the information of why she was fired? Or I could look at her file?
Her file is free to look at. And if someone would like to do that, I suggest they contact Joanne. She's the HR director. And they'll be able to look at whatever information in her file is able to, you know, is public information.
Is there a letter in there stating why she was fired?
Guess you'll have to come and see. Any other comments?
Yes.
Dave Goodman, I just want a little clarification. We talked about the recording of the minutes. Are you recording the minutes right now on some type of device?
Uh huh, right here.
Oh, it's so small, I couldn't see. Okay, because I used to go to, like, planning and zoning, and they had this big tape recorder.
They still do, but, yeah.
Okay, but that's capable of recording every word that's said, et cetera?
It records everything.
Oh, good, okay. Because I remember reading one set of minutes, and, because I can't get to every meeting, and it said, "A comment was made by a certain person." And then I went on to the next sentence, but didn't tell me what the comment was. And that, I think, is what we need a little bit more information. I mean, you can't write a book, and no one expects it verbatim. But just a general synopsis of what a person said and maybe what a response was. Thank you.
I have a question. I don't know if this is appropriate, but as far as looking at people's records as provided terminated, wouldn't that, could that, I mean, if that happened to me, I would certainly not want people looking over that information and then disclosing it in a public town hall meeting. Wouldn't that come under, like, you know, slanderous type of?
Not public domain.
It depends on the nature of, say, determination. It would depend what sort of things were involved. There's a balancing, the right of the public to know, you know, what the functions of their government.
Okay.
That's normally, in freedom of information terms, is the... Now, I can't think of the term, so as far as I went there. But a legitimate, basically a legitimate right to know versus one of the exemptions is whether it's invasion of privacy.
Right, right.
And basically, how we reach that is we look at all the Freedom of Information Commission. It's a state commission. Its job is to interpret the Freedom of Information Act and decide what they deem to be invasion of privacy and what they don't. So, particularly salacious details sometimes can be, can be found invasion of privacy. Things like medical records are usually invasion of privacy. Your social security numbers and things like that are normally redacted from records. But something sort of germane that might be common, someone stole $20, you know, that's not necessarily something that would be redacted. I'm not suggesting that that has happened in this town. That's just an example I come up with in talking about it.
There's very, very few limitations to the law to hold those records back. I could go in and I could look at every single document. I could get a letter if Mrs. Malarde sent a letter to Jennifer Gauthier and why she was fired that is disclosable to the public. Unless, yeah, if there's something salacious in it, I doubt there'd be something salacious in a termination letter. So, that all is, as a government employee, we, again, we work for the people. Jennifer worked for the people. We have a right to know what our government employees do. So, it's very important to follow FY procedures. So, thank you for clarifying for me.
Yes.
Ed Munster, Horton Road, Haddon. I mean, it just seems to me to be common sense that we would not want to expose the town to undue lawsuits with respect to some of this information. So, I think a general statement, until whatever has happened has settled out, is the more appropriate approach to taking.
She was terminated. That is, it is settled out.
Well, you don't know what lawsuits may be coming.
Has she filed a lawsuit with the town? Is this something we should know about? Has she filed?
I don't know whether there's any lawsuits. I'm not just suggesting that you don't want to jump the gun and start this process of exposing the information that could, in fact, put us as a town in jeopardy. I don't think any of us would like to have that happen.
And just as a reminder, Melissa, we did go into an executive session with Jennifer Gothier at one point in time, which you are aware of. And there were comments made during that meeting. So, I would just be mindful of those things that were said.
I have no problem with what was said during that meeting. In fact, we should have had an executive session to discuss the issues with Jennifer. And then we, as a board, and with Joe as the Chair of Board of Finance, then should have made the determination to terminate or keep her.
Well, legally, under lawful misconduct, the matters of the day-to-day, I have the right to do that. And it does say that the Board of Selectmen may remove the person according to the charter. But that also has to do with the individual maybe not doing their job appropriately as far as assessment, or possibly different things like that. And that was not the case. So, taking care of the day-to-day. I spoke to the labor attorney before action was taken to clarify that I have the right to do it, and I was told that I did. So, that is what occurred. And at some further point in time, I'm sure, things may or may not come out. But I'm not prepared to say any more than that. And I'm not really sure why that's an issue. I really don't.
If you're unilaterally firing an employee, the process should have been to put them on administrative leave, call emergency meetings with the Board of Selectmen and Joe, and then discuss the matter. Kyle just said that he'd have to review the charter. So, clearly, the labor attorney didn't quite have, and it may have been Nick who looked at it, didn't quite have the charter under their belt at that time. And I still think that the Board of Selectmen should...
And Kyle, it's free to look, but I had a meeting with Nick, and Nick has reviewed the charter. And that is what I was told, unfortunately. I'm not going to put words in Kyle's mouth because he's here. But I had a conversation with Nick twice, and Nick has reviewed, and that is what Nick has commented on. So, I am going to follow the labor attorney that we have both shared, who has led this town very well, whose word that I trust, whose associates I trust. And we're going to just leave it at that. Any other comments on anything else?
I'll just go for the record. Yeah, when I responded to that and reviewed the charter, that was for me personally. Attorney Nick Rose, the other, my colleague, works for the town as well. He was the one that dealt directly with this. He's at another town.
Yeah, my last comment is that when you work for the town, the people are the last supervisor of those employees. So, we have the right to know why they hired and why they're fired. It's not something that could be kept secret. And once they are supposedly not the employer of the town, they're not protected by the town FOI. You have to be able to release the information. And sorry if there's a problem, but that's...
No one said that information could not be released. I already said that her file is free to be looked at. So, no one said that. Don't put words in my mouth anymore.
Okay, I'll be in touch.
Thank you. All right. Tax refunds. We have two real estate refunds that total $21.39. We have a total motor vehicle refund of $381.23. And then we have one motor vehicle supplement refund of $27.73 for a grand total of tax refunds effective on the May 14, 18 Selectmen's meeting of $402.62. So, a motion to approve, please.
I'll make that motion.
Is this, are you supposed to add the real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles to the grand total? I don't, I think it might, or is this 402, not the total of 27 plus 381 plus 21? I think it might be off by the...
Because they're not given to us by the tax collector, so we'll see. You shouldn't add in those supplemental?
No.
What did you get, motion?
$430.35.
To approve $430.35. I'll make that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Tammy Anderson is here. She is our Assistant Assessor. She is certified. I would like to appoint her to become the new tax assessor for the town. She's been filling in since the termination of Jennifer Gothier. You all received a letter, an offer letter approving approval from the Board of Selectmen. Chair of the Board of Finance is here this evening. So, if I have a motion to appoint Tammy Anderson as the new tax collector. I'll make the motion. Any discussion?
Yes. Again, first, I'll preface this by saying I'm excited that Tammy's going to be our assessor. She has my support, and I think she'll do an excellent job. But before we get there, again, I have to say that it feels like this is a rubber stamp of what the First Selectmen wants. We don't ever get to see any of the other resumes, just like the EDC coordinator. A person is brought to us, there's no discussion. The Board of Selectmen is not involved in the hiring or interview process. When we hired our first finance director a couple years ago, I included the whole Board of Selectmen. They also had, I made a Dropbox file of every single resume. And also, Joe was in on that hiring process as well. He also had access to all those resumes.
So, this is not a rubber stamp from my office. When we hired the previous tax assessor, a committee was put together. The previous tax assessor, assessor from Mystic, the tax collector, myself, and at that time Bob Duval. All employees or candidates were rated on a rating system. The person who came in second was Tammy Anderson. Tammy has, came in as again, second in that position. Her score was very high. Tammy is more than qualified to serve in this position. I don't see the need to open it up again since we only went through this process a year and a half ago. So, it is just a recommendation that we appoint Tammy. If you...
It's a very good recommendation. She's already here, she's been doing it. She knows all that.
If you remember when I prefaced my statement with that I have no problem with Tammy, I have a problem with the process. Now, let's go back to the EDC coordinator.
We went through the process, the same process that we always go through.
You didn't go through the process with this one. This is your decision.
We went through a hiring process. Tammy came in second. It's not the first time that we have done this. When we hired for the Senior Center Director, Shannon came in second, and we gave Shannon the position. So, this is not, if you don't agree with the process, that's fine. You can vote hover, you feel you need to. But I don't see the need to go through the process again. Tammy's doing the job. She's being compensated for the job. She's more than qualified to do the job. If that was not the case, if Tammy had not applied for the job previously, if Tammy had not gone through the process previously, if Tammy was not the candidate who came in second previously, then I could see where there might be some question. But we just went through this, and that is how the process worked its way out. And we used a board for people to look at that process. It was not something that I made a suggestion, recommendation on, is the process that we go through when we hire. And it is the process to be brought to this board to make a recommendation to the board. If there is a time when we are all involved in that process, then that would become a meeting. And I'm sure somebody would have a problem that that's a daytime meeting. But it is during a recommendation process with individuals who are very qualified to be able to make a recommendation. So, this is the recommendation that is here. The three people who make up the Board of Selectmen are here. The Chair of the Board of Finance are here. So, I'm going to call a vote.
And again, are you closing discussion?
No, Melissa, if you want to discuss this, you have to discuss.
Yeah, I do want to discuss this a little bit more. First of all, the FOI law does allow executive session for hiring. There's no, that's not a public meeting, or a session for interviews. If I didn't know Tammy, I would have said this needs to go back out. Because what are we to say, pretend Tammy isn't in the equation? What if there are better candidates out there than the person that you chose?
But the thing is, she isn't.
We don't know if there's better candidates because we didn't go out. That's what I'm saying. The process is flawed, and the EDC coordinator is the same thing. The Board of Selectmen should be part of the hiring and firing interview process for town employees. And also, you've already offered her the position before we voted.
Now, I have a letter, per approval of the Board of Selectmen and the Chair of the Board of Finance. We'd like to offer. It's very clear we need approval.
It's dated May 11.
Correct. I handed her an offer letter so she'd know to come here tonight. And it also says, "Per approval." And once that approval is set, or not, she will be or will not be.
Again, we, I strongly believe that the Board of Selectmen needs to be involved in the hiring.
Well, I'm in charge of the day-to-day process. I take that as...
This is not a day-to-day process.
No, I need the Board of Selectmen to approve or disapprove.
This is a huge appointment.
It is a huge appointment.
It's very important to the town.
And she does a great job. She's been doing a great job.
Again, it's not about Tammy. It's about the process and the hiring.
But it is, this is what this whole thing is. It is about Tammy right now.
Okay, so next time, though, if you know somebody, then this...
If she's already doing the job. It's one day if we had to bring her in fresh. She's not, she's doing the job right now, Melissa.
It's clear.
If she's doing the job...
Very clear what the Board and what Mrs. Malarde and you are, what your MO is. That's okay.
She's more than capable of doing the job. She's perfect for the job.
Again, it's not this situation. It's in general, it's the process.
Well, when we have that situation, then next time, then we can bring it up, but it's not here. It's not here.
As the EDC coordinator, we applied for positions. We put a committee together. We've gone through that process. We did it for the building inspector. We have all these retirements coming up. We've had retirements. We did it for the building inspector. We did it for assessor.
Why would you not include the Board of Selectmen, though?
Why would I include the Board of Selectmen?
It's our appointment. We hire and fire the employees.
It is, and the recommendation of the committee is sitting here in front of you.
But why wouldn't you want to include the board members?
Because I don't feel it is part of the process.
Okay.
It is not part of the day-to-day activity.
This is not a day-to-day activity. I'm sorry. Day-to-day activity is paying the electric bill. This is hiring an employee.
Going through the process of putting a committee together and the interview process is considered a day-to-day activity. I don't know what you did when you were in office, but this is how, this is the process. If you don't like this, vote against it. I don't know what to say.
What do you think, Mr. EDC?
Yes, this is scary.
So, you would take the recommendation of the...
I'll just call for the order of the...
I'm talking to a constituent.
I'm calling for it. It's not public comment.
I can't talk to the public?
Not right now, you can't.
Okay, yes, you may.
We're going to talk between us. Any more discussion? Joe, I'm going to include you in this. So, all in favor of appointing Tammy Anderson to be our tax assessor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tosed. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jeez.
My God.
All right. So, the last point of business is the transfer station discussion. The board met back on April 24th and discussed options for the transfer station for fees. When we left that meeting, we all seemed to be on the same page miraculously on that. The fee was going to be increased to $75, due for most part that the fees haven't been increased since 2010, and also because of the bulky. We had discussed to leave the rates for senior citizens to be at $50 and to keep that there. There are some concerns about monitoring at the transfer station and making sure that excessive bulk does not go in. We talked about creating tickets to allow two bulky trips per year, one in the fall and one in the spring, with the opportunity of the residents being able to buy additional tickets for bulky ways if need be. So, I'd like to continue that discussion and see if we could come to some type of agreement tonight on that since transfer station stickers are normally sold starting in June when adult licenses are issued. So, if we could just, for purposes of discussion, give a motion to set the fees.
Before we go, do you want to do the Small Cities Grant first? Get that out of the way, you said.
Yeah, we can do that now. Yeah, let's just, no, we'll just finish. We'll do transfer station and just Small Cities, yeah. I would just have a motion for basis of discussion to approve $75 for transfer station fees and then $50 for seniors age 65 and older.
Make the motion.
Okay. Any discussion?
I was if we're ready to raise fees before we finalize what we were going to do at the transfer station. We just started the discussions. I would suggest reappointing the transfer station task force to complete their work.
All right. Well, the transfer station task force does not set the fees. The Board of Selectmen sets the fees.
I understand that. But they were working on all this research. They had done a lot of work already getting us to what the solution should be. They would present their information to us, and then we would make a decision. I mean, we don't have to raise the fees if we did some kind of a ticket system we charged by the bulky load. I don't think we're quite ready to make a decision on raising prices.
So, all of the other towns, and I know later you want to put on that... So all of the other towns, and I know Larry, you want to add that on this.
All the other towns are a lot more expensive than we are, and this is a start. I think we've got to start somewhere, and it's not a lot of money, Melissa. I mean, we're still keeping the elderly, I mean, they're not going up any, but to raise it...
All the other towns have done the research, we have the information, that information was available at that meeting. If you want to have the Board of Selectmen continue with conversation and not have that tonight, and have us have another meeting to have a more lengthy conversation around it, so be it. But I am not looking to appoint a Transfer Station Task Force to start to engage themselves with things that have to do with decisions that belong to the Board of Selectmen, and matters that, to be quite honest with you, I really have nothing to do with residents, such as employee performance and that type of thing, which is where they were going with this, so...
That's not where they were going with this, but we had a lot of ideas, we had a lot of ideas to educate the public, there were a lot of things that they were working on to increase recycling, which decreases our costs. Again, that's my position, but you have a motion on the floor?
Any other comments? Okay. All right, so all those in favor of increasing the transfer station fees to $75, and when that is done, handing out two tickets for bulky, we need to come up with a price, though, for additional tickets and what those are going to cost. We had talked about $5 to $10 for those. There's any...
And that's where, once we up the price on this, then we have time, we'll be able to get a time for that, but, because there's a lot, there's a lot of training involved in that, which we have to do.
Right. Well, I think initially, because some of it is supervision, it's needed, and to make sure that stickers are up to date, people aren't abusing the number of trips, all the things that are already in the rules for that. Again, the cost of recycling, or not recycling, of transferring all of this and getting up to Hartford is very expensive. I think we're going to see some changes coming, but to try to make it be affordable and not change things all at once, I think to be able to buy additional tickets should be $5, and I think that we need to also ask for contractors, or people who have materials going to the transfer station, that we ask for a copy of their building permit.
And we also talked, I believe, among trailers too, right?
Yes.
I think that was one of our things we...
Yeah.
Can I clarify, what do you mean, what goes up to Hartford?
The bulky waste.
But everything that goes up to Hartford is expensive.
We don't ship it to Hartford.
Well, Essex does.
Yeah, Essex, we ship it.
I know that, but it's all part of the cost, and we're a customer of Mira, and that's part of what we pay for our tonnage. So yes, it does end up in Hartford, but we don't ship it there, so it's not... It's part of the, it's still part of the expense.
I just wanted to make sure nothing changed, that we're bringing it in.
So are we going to allow trailers?
You have to allow trailers.
Well, we have to allow trailers on garbage, but when a contractor comes in with a mason dump, and it happens all the time, with a trailer on the back of it with shingles, I don't feel that a trailer should be brought in there. That costs us, that's a lot of money for us, because they pack tight. I have a problem with that, you know, unless there's a permit showed, but I believe that there should not be trailers in there. For the normal guy, you know, you go down with your little car and you put a trailer on it, that's okay, because, you know, but to have a truck go in there, a full-size truck, we couldn't have cube vans in there, okay? We stopped that a long time ago. I had, we get a new vehicle because my cube van didn't work in there. So that's no different than putting a trailer in there.
We do have already a rule for a certain size trailer cannot be, cannot be in there. So again, this isn't, this isn't something that, I don't think we should rush into something like this. This isn't going to be solved today. It's clear that we're not all on the same page with what needs to be even discussed. If you want to raise the sticker price for now, take the next year to figure out the bulky, that's, or the ticket system, however you want to do it, but we're not going to do that in the next two weeks before the stickers are being sold.
I also have a problem with the stickers not being on the vehicle either.
Right, all right. So why don't we do this? Why don't we, because there are pieces with the bulky, and there's always going to be things that are going to fall through the cracks, and I think that having someone there specifically to monitor the transfer station and see is what to do. So we have a size, we have a limit on the trailer, we have how many trips per day. We're going to request that we see a building permit, I think that will help. And we'll increase the fee to $75 and leave the fee at $50 for seniors 65, ages 65 and over.
Those first two that you mentioned are already rules.
I know they are, I'm just recapping them.
Biggest thing is getting somebody to enforce them.
Okay, so are we all in agreement of that?
No. I'm going to say nay, if you're withholding on, but it is...
Okay. All right, so all those in favor of increasing the fee to $75, leaving the fee at 65 for seniors?
Fifty.
Fifty, what did I say, 65? Sorry, $50 for seniors. Motion by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we're going to include that building permit, as I said, in there. Okay. Last piece of business. We had had the Small City Grant repurposed for the Senior Center. That piece of the grant is going to take care of the paving at the Senior Center, the walkway at the Senior Center, and the outside ADA improvements that need to be done. That being that it's part of federal funding, you need to be able to use prevailing wage, therefore we need to use that administrator for the grant. As I mentioned, Larry Wagner was the administrator. They came out with, Department of Housing came out with new rules to say that even though that individual was part of the process, under the new loan revisions, you have to go out and re-advertise for this administrator. So it's just another piece that was added on. We went ahead and we did that. The only RFQ we got in was Larry Wagner, who's been handling this grant from the beginning, he's done other work for the town previously, so I'd like to be able to get those improvements taken care of at the Senior Center. Obviously, we're in season for construction, and I would like to try to schedule those around 4th of July, so in order for us to give the timing for contractors to be able to do that work around that period of time. So I have a motion to approve Larry Wagner and Associates to administer the Small City Grant that we repurposed for the Senior Center.
And that was for the paving of the driveway, that's...
The paving of the driveway, and the walkway, the walkway goes the wrong way. You can't turn the wheelchair the way the walkway goes. So it's the walkway, it's the railing, it's the paving, and putting a new, changing that entryway a little bit with a door and the overhang.
I'll make that motion. Larry's a great guy, he's been doing it for a million years, very good at this job.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.